Welcome back to the Beyond the Scope Podcast. I am your host, senior year medical student, Andy. So here we continue the mission of sharing impactful stories from students, residents, and attendings of all different medical professions while giving you an inside look into their lives, not just as healthcare workers, but the incredible people they are as well. And this podcast, of course, if you've been following for a while, is all about the things those medical school years don't really teach you, things that are beyond the scope of our practice. So with that being said, let's introduce today's guest. And I know I have my set intro. This one is actually going to be kind of about the things that medical school teaches you. And in fact, it's going to be more of an episode to listen in the car. And to be honest, could be a precursor to some ideas further down the road, as I want to include more educational pearls on my channel. But the reason why I am growing more confident in including educational point is because of the guy I have on the podcast right here. I'm not going to say my step two score out loud, but let's just say it was pretty damn good. And it was all thanks to the mentorship guidance and study tips from today's guest. Current pediatric critical care physician at the Cleveland Clinic. He has shared his passion for medical education across the social media and specializes in USMLE prep, whether that be step one shelves, or now kind of the big bulk of preparation, step two CK. His Notion template quite literally directed my life for three months as I pushed through step dedicated. And I really credit habits to my success and sanity during that time. So for all those in medical school and even those pre-meds who want to read and listen along to see what you're about to get into, this is an episode for you. And so we got the guidance of the one and only Dr. Rahul Damaria, AKA High Guru. Welcome back to the channel.
Andy, so great to see you. You are past the finish line. I'm super excited and thanks so much for the kind words.
Oh, of course. Again, it's a pleasure to have you back on the channel. And for those of you watching or listening, you may recognize the voice and the face. He was the pediatric critical care representative on my 73 question series. And it's been, oh man, it's been a while since we met. And you are now moved on from the pick you fellow life to attending. So how's attending life been?
You know, sometimes attending life feels like drinking from a fire hose, especially this first year. But I will say, I love where I work. I love my colleagues and all of the amazing, bright people who I can work with each and every day. So I do want to just say, Andy, that this time on your channel, I took the tag off of my shirt. We got a couple of comments from the 73 question video because I thought it was nice and fancy to buy a new shirt before the video. I forgot to take off the tag.
I forgot about that. Well, I think we'll be okay today again, because we are doing something pretty cool. We are going to walk through some USMLE style questions that you have designed based on your experience and extensive tutoring with USMLE. And speaking of USMLE, by the way, those watching, if you want to just like skip all this and go straight to the questions, there'll probably be a timestamp on the screen like here. So you can skip there. But we all know, especially my class of 2024, step one is pass fail across the board. And I know a lot of the focus of USMLE prep has previously been step one, because that's kind of the make or break. But for my class, step two is kind of that first run of this is the only number you got. So how have you shifted your focus and strategies now that step two is the main thing?
Absolutely. You know, Andy, I really am passionate about both step one shelf and step two CK prep. So I think that when it comes to both of these exams, they're under this research category of like high stakes exams, and they truly are high stakes in terms of, you know, A, it's stressful to prepare for them, and B, residency program directors take it into account when you are applying through your ERAS application. When it comes to step one, I actually prepared the same way as it was when I took it, which was a three-digit score. And I think understanding like the basic fundamentals really allows for you to excel on shelf and step two CK, because truly they are complementary to each other. And throughout this episode, and as we kind of break down these questions, hopefully I'll be able to share some of those integrations.
Absolutely. And you mentioned those fundamentals, and of course, we'll break those down as we go through those questions. And so kind of preview of the format of this episode, we're going to be going through, I believe, five practice questions that are tuned to each of the shelves. And that was kind of the backbone of how I prepared for step two. Kind of snaking my way through like OB-GYN, medicine, pediatrics, neuropsych, surgery. And that's how I kind of categorize them in my brain. So that's how we decided to do it today. And after each question, we will kind of break down some tips based on experience of how to prepare for these shelves, because lord knows, it is not easy to prepare for them as you were like working a full-time job clinically, well, working without getting paid.
Oh gosh, I know. Sore subject.
Yep. But and before we get started, again, I cannot emphasize this enough. If you guys are in the preparation process for your shelves, I know a lot of people, by the time this releases, will have just completed their first rotation of third year, or maybe their second. We're kind of missing the boat for step two in a way, but hopefully this episode will be a good resource for all. Can, where can people find your incredible courses, your organization, so that they can really excel on these cornerstone exams?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thanks for those kind words. So I can be found at High Guru Prep on Instagram. You can also follow me on Twitter. My website, highguru.com, kind of has everything laid out. More importantly, I just like to take a very personalized approach. So I'll do my best to kind of hear where you're at in your preparation. I have a step one course that's been very popular, a YouTube channel as well. So this is kind of all encompassing when it comes to which students are best for the High Guru mentality, which focuses on active recall. So you know, I love to connect with whether you are allopathic, osteopathic, non-US IMG, US IMG. I really am so grateful to have such a wonderful community thus far. And again, Andy, thanks for having me here today.
Sure thing. And all right, so now this is probably the timestamp. Was that eight, 12, 813? So those of you who didn't want to hear us ramble, here we go. Let's get started with the questions.
All right, Andy. So before we get into the individual questions, I think it will be very helpful for us to go through kind of how a USMLE question is written, because this forms kind of the foundation for any of the step one or shelf exam questions. So I just want to sketch this out real quick, just so that everybody is familiar. So every single question is going to have the first building block, which is the STEM. And step one stems are like, what's the most likely mechanism? Whereas step two, it's like, what's the most likely diagnosis? Or the infamous, what's the next best step in management? Right? Exactly. I don't, I don't mean to bring back PTSD, but just saying.
I'll be okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, so the first thing that a USMLE question has is a chief complaint. And the chief complaint is usually pretty short. And one of the things that I always like to say with the chief complaint is understand the tempo of the disease. So if it's like acute, you're going to be thinking of things like trauma, infection, et cetera. Right? Then you have the elaboration of the chief complaint, which is called the HPI. That's followed by the past medical history, then the medications. And obviously like the meds and the past medical history kind of go hand in hand. For example, like if the meds say the patient is on metformin, chances are the past medical history is type two diabetes. And you know, they're, they're very correlated. Then you have like the allergies, immunizations, you have the social history, you have the family history, which if you notice any abnormalities in the family history, you may think that the patient's more predisposed, maybe genetically, to a certain condition. And then one thing that I always like to pay attention to is after the family history, the actual vignette usually shifts into a different perspective. And I call this the physician's perspective. And that physician's perspective starts with the more objective data, vital signs, then physical exam, and then labs and imaging. And you'll notice that a lot of these questions, which we'll go through, follow this kind of building block approach.
Yep. And for those watching, it's all on the screen. Those listening, this is very reminiscent of you going through your first year of med school, kind of breaking down the parts of an HPI and how to structure, you know, you got your old cards and then you go through all that. So with the cool thing about step two, and I think why they are trying to put a ton more emphasis on it, is that it is a lot more, not accurate, but I guess like the thought process is a lot similar, a lot more similar to clinical practice. So it reads like an oral presentation, really. And so that's how I think about breaking down the questions. And so with that, we can kind of put it into practice now with our first question.
All right, let's go through this. So I usually just like to start reading the STEM. So we'll start with the STEM. Which of the following findings may likely be present in this patient? So you have a three-day-old neonate who is in the nursery. And so whenever you're thinking about neonates, you think about acute things, maybe things that occurred during delivery, or you think about infection, or maybe even things like birth trauma, et cetera. So he is acutely noted to be rigid and have eyes rolled back. Now, this is a pretty common illness script, right? When you're rigid and eyes rolled back, you're probably thinking about a seizure. And here we notice that the patient is limp on exam. So now, you know, my mind kind of is going through like, wow, this patient may have some issue with the central nervous system. And the central nervous system is composed of blood vessels, cerebral spinal fluid, or like the ventricles, as well as the brain parenchyma. Maternal history is going to be unremarkable. So this is a really good time for me to kind of like pause and say like, unremarkable, no negative. These are what I call pertinent negatives. And what pertinent negatives are in a vignette, they essentially are areas where the test makers say, hey, don't worry about this. So for example, the maternal history is pretty benign. So it's not probably going to be something related to vertical transmission. Let's say like an infection, STI type of thing. So baby was born full-term with APGARs of eight and eight, one and five minutes of life. So that's pretty good. And physical exam is notable for hypotonia, lethargy, long-set face, and low-set ears. So as you can see, hypotonia, lethargy, that kind of relates to the chief complaint and HPI. But then the long-set face and low-set ears, that kind of brings up this possibility of maybe a genetic syndrome, right? Whenever you see characteristic faces, your mind kind of shifts to that. And then you notice that the serum ionized calcium is going to be low in the labs. So that can be, you know, classified as hypocalcemia. And can hypocalcemia cause CNS abnormalities?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And so now, when you're thinking about genetics and hypocalcemia, maybe in your mind, you're trying to kind of recall what content relates to hypocalcemia, seizures, genetic abnormality. And if you're thinking DeJord syndrome, you're absolutely correct. So you know, after stabilization, a genetic panel is sent, and the STEM is which of the following findings may likely be present in this patient? So we have A, 22Q11 deletion, B, myotic nondisjunction, C, trinucleotide repeat disorder, or D, imprinting with paternal gene deletion. Andy, hate to put you on the spot. What do you think?
I'm going to go with A, 22Q11 deletion.
Absolutely. This is going to be DeJord syndrome, which remember, just to integrate some step one, is all related to the third and fourth virginal pouch that doesn't form as correctly. So, oh gosh, I know, I know, I know. We all started twitching here. But, but you know, in all seriousness, it's, it's so important because you know, this, this is actually under this assessment category of multi-system disorders. And so this multi-system disorder, because you don't have parathyroids, you get hypocalcemia. Later on in life, this patient may have recurrent infections that are T-cell related, because they have thymic aplasia. And then if this child got an echo, you may be worried about a conotruncle defect, like truncus arteriosus, tetralogy of Fallot, et cetera. Andy, do you want to go through the remaining answer choices?
Yeah. So have myotic nondisjunction, trinucleotide repeat disorders, and then imprinting with paternal gene deletion. And now I'm going to be trying to pull a ton of knowledge from the deep recesses of my brain. You know, at first, of course, I think the trinucleotide repeat disorder, how I typically go through it, is I start eliminating choices too. So I knew for a fact, the main ones are like trisomy 13, 18, and 21. For me, I saw like hypocalcemia, that's not a part of any of these. And there are a certain, a pretty characteristic buzzwords with 13 and 18. Oh man. 13 is, is that the one with the like overlapping fingers?
Yeah, like Patao syndrome. Yeah.
Yep. Patao. And 18.
That's going to be like the rocker bottom feet with Edward syndrome. Yep.
That's right. Okay. And then basically, any other trinucleotide repeat disorder is practically lethal. So the fact that this patient is still here and good APGAR scores and everything, I kind of eliminated trinucleotide repeat disorder in my head.
Yeah. No, I think, I think that's a really good thought process. And you know, just to kind of loop that back in, remember, trinucleotide repeat disorder, some of them, I agree with you, they, they can be lethal. But things like, for example, myotonic dystrophy, or fragile X syndrome, or Friedt's ataxia, or Huntington's disease. You know, we think about those trinucleotide repeat disorders exhibiting a genetic principle called anticipation.
And of course, the imprinting with a paternal gene, that is the, ooh. Let's see. There's two. There's Angelman's and Williams.
Close. Yeah, Prater Willie. Yeah, Prater Willie.
Prater Willie. No, Williams is a whole different thing. So Prater Willie, I always remember, this is the dumbest acronym. It's like, mom doesn't have a Willie.
All right.
Oh my God. Cannot believe I'm saying this out loud. And so if I remember one of them, I remember the other. So it's not this. Guys, if you happen to remember that mom doesn't have a Willie, that's how you remember the mom is, or the maternal gene inheritance for that, the 15Q or something.
Yeah, yeah. It's chromosome 15. And you know, the mom's genes are actually methylated, and it's the paternal genes that are mutated or deleted. And that's what gives you Prater Willie. And remember, these patients are going to have like hyperphasia, they're going to be obese, they're going to have intellectual disability, seizures, et cetera. But awesome. I think this is a great question breakdown. And one other point that I want to make, especially as you guys go through like UWorld and NBMEs, is like every single answer choice, if the question is written really nicely, has a assessment point that you should be thinking over, a diagnosis that you should be thinking of. So they're not here to trick you. They're here to see if you can discern between different diseases, for example.
And so, yeah, and that's our, our pediatrics question. I think pediatrics is pretty interesting, because at least for me, I got split into your inpatient, your outpatient, and then a subspecialty in two weeks of each for my core rotation. And honestly, I did a lot of studying more on the outpatient and specialist end. Just because inpatient, I was on for 12 days straight. I still remember that, like, you know, getting night handover at 6:00 AM. And then being there, handling admissions, the longest rounds ever. So my tip would be definitely try to get your studying in during those outpatient, outpatient weeks. Incredible resources to use, the CHOP pathways, so Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania.
Philadelphia.
Yep. Or Philadelphia.
Yeah, Philadelphia.
One of those. But as one of the best children's hospitals in the world, they have great, great pathways. If you search them, like asthma, neonatal sepsis, all things that are super useful for you as a student to look up, particularly when you're admitting somebody inpatient. But yeah, I think those are the big things. And of course, I always hammer home, practice questions, practice questions, practice questions. Try to knock out 20, 30 a day and really dive into them like how we are right now.
Awesome. That's great.
So, all right.
If I, if I may put a plug, just because pediatrics, I mean, we started with it. I'm a little biased. I'm in, I'm in the field. But you know, just a couple of things, like when you guys are clinically on your rotation, pediatrics and the history part always ask about birth history and developmental milestones. Like that is really going to be super helpful as you interact with families and pediatric patients. And then I completely agree with your study tactics. And sometimes what I found is rather than setting like question goals even per day, I like to set question goals per week, just so that I know that if I'm on outpatient and I have a little extra time, I can do a little bit more questions than compared to inpatient. So at least that can help keep you on pace to complete the UWorld questions for the rotation.
Yeah. Yeah. And just enjoy playing with the kids. I know, at least for me, I'm also biased. I enjoy the pediatric population. But some, some people do not enjoy kids, but just know that they're cute.
They are.
Okay. So actually, OB-GYN? Okay. All righty. So I can, I can read this one and then break it down.
Yeah, yeah.
So we got a 34-year-old female presents due to lower abdominal discomfort and new onset vaginal spotting for the past four days. The patient has a history of menarasia requiring an IUD placed two years prior, which decreased her frequency of menses. She has never been pregnant and has no history of STI. BMI 31, vitals are stable. Physical exam notes right adnexal fullness and tenderness. Cervix is closed, urine pregnancy test is positive. Trans-abdominal ultrasound shows small uterus with device in place. What is the next best step in management? And so our choices are A, diagnostic laparoscopy, B, transvaginal ultrasound, C, FSH and prolactin levels, D, endometrial biopsy, and E, IUD removal. Ah, the next, what is the next best step in management? Love it. Rahul?
All right. Let's go, let's go through this. So you know, this 34-year-old comes in with pretty acute symptoms, right? Lower abdominal discomfort and new onset vaginal spotting. One thing for us to note here is that like lower abdominal discomfort, you can think of it like, is it GI or is it repro? Right? Because all of the lower quadrant things like appendicitis, diverticulitis, even suprapubic tenderness for cystitis are going to be adjacent to organs such as the ovaries, uterus, et cetera, in this female. And once you see new onset vaginal spotting, which way does that kind of land you? GI or more repro?
Repro.
Exactly. So now she has a history of menarasia, and she has this IUD placed, which decreased her frequency of menses, which essentially is a normal phenomenon, because these are hormone-containing devices, and they will shut down your hypothalamic-pituitary axis, et cetera. Never been pregnant, no history of STI. So here's our no negative and normal. What is that known as?
Your pertinent negatives.
Your pertinent negatives. So we're going to get away from things like STI mediated PID, et cetera. And BMI is going to be 31. So what's the classification of that?
So that, I believe it's just obese. So not, not in the morbid category, is over 25 is overweight. And then 30 above is obese.
Yep, absolutely. And then, you know, vital signs are stable. And I want to kind of like really make a point about this right here is because, you know, this is going to be a common theme that you all are going to see in shelf and step two CK exams, especially related to next best step in management. So like whenever vital signs are stable, that is a good time for you to clue in and be like, okay, I can do a diagnostic test. Because like if vital signs are unstable, what do you think the answer is going to be more related to, Andy?
Surgery.
Yeah, surgery, airway breathing circulation. You can't put unstable patients in a scanner, for example. So like whenever I see vital signs are stable, I say, all right, I can actually do a diagnostic test to confirm things and then move stepwise. Now, physical exam shows that there is right adnexal fullness and tenderness. And this is super important, because as you can see, it's unilateral. So because it's unilateral, you know, you're thinking about like anatomic pathology, something that can only be on one side compared to like something bilateral, which could be hormonal mediated, et cetera, or systemically mediated. So this kind of brings up what specific working diagnosis. And in my mind, I think of A, ectopic pregnancy, right? Where you have right adnexal fullness. Now, obviously, the patient has an IUD in place. And so that can prevent the intrauterine implantation of the developing embryo. And that's super important, that you know, IUDs can at times, if you get pregnant, be a risk factor for ectopic pregnancies. Cervix is closed, so you are not thinking about like any incomplete, inevitable abortions. Remember, those abortions are the ones that are going to be with the cervix open. And then urine pregnancy test is positive, but with right adnexal fullness and UPT being positive, what does that confirm our diagnosis of?
Well, I wouldn't say confirm.
Oh yeah, that's good. I like it.
I'd say it is most likely ectopic pregnancy route.
Absolutely.
And it's funny you say kind of like working diagnosis, because as I'm reading this, you know, there, there are things where, especially for OB-GYN, they're trying to cue you in or lead you down a path, or even to trick you. So again, the never been pregnant and no history of STIs. A history of STI puts you, or even PID too, puts you at risk for ectopic pregnancy. So no history is like, oh, okay, they're trying to cue you in on, eh, maybe, maybe it's not. And then BMI of 31, I'm thinking, you know, PCOS is on the differential as well, especially with like unilateral adnexal tenderness. But as you go down, and again, it's like, oh man, do we need to take this person to the OR immediately? Is this rupturing? Or could this be like an APH? Vital signs are stable. Okay. That already is like knocking things off my differential. And this is also like how, for me, I'm reading the question as well. It's like I have a ton of ideas in my head. As I'm reading, I'm like, okay, not less likely, less likely, less likely, more likely. Of course, the right adnexal fullness and tenderness, now like you mentioned, probably anatomical, but less likely infectious, because the vital signs are stable. Cervix is closed, and now, you know, with the urine BCG or urine pregnancy test being positive, it's like, all right, perfect. Now the leading is ectopic. And the reason why I said, is it confirmed? Is because, yeah, it's most likely, but there is one thing here that confirms the diagnosis.
Absolutely. And you know, you can see, trans-abdominal ultrasound shows that there's a small uterus with device in place. However, what you want to do is get just probably a better picture. And what's the answer then?
Transvaginal ultrasound. And I will say, and you can, you can support me in this, USMLE loves ultrasound. If it's on, if it's one of the choices, always put that like, like have a degree of suspicion that it's probably the ultrasound choice.
Yeah. And I think ultrasound has its advantages. You know, it's portable, it doesn't expose the patient to radiation, it's relatively quick. Remember, ultrasound is going to be really good for, you know, obstetrics, as well as like any sort of fluid collections that you want. that you want to figure out whether it's going to be simple or complex. So I completely agree. Awesome. You're two for two, man.
Thank you. And kind of briefly for the OB GYN rotation. I, I think, I always recommend people do this one first, actually. That's how I arrange it because you get a great experience of surgery. So you, you get to understand the flow of the OR. You get your outpatient. So you learn how to run clinic. You know how to write notes. And then not just that, but you get your inpatient. So you get familiar with like pre-rounding and rounds, your presentations and everything. So you get like this nice mixed bag where like, sure, you don't spend a ton of time in the OR, but you get a little sampler platter of everything that you're probably going to get into in third year. And I, I think if you do have a designated couple of weeks on LND, I would recommend to get a ton of studying done then, because it's a lot of waiting around until this hits the fan. And so like it can go from zero to 100 real quick, but in those zero moments, you got nothing but time. So.
Yeah. No, that's true. My wife is an OB resident. So she also recommends, you know, when, when it is quiet, try to get some studying in. And I think that whenever you're trying to like balance your OB GYN studying, think about, about it in like two separate kind of silos. You have the obstetrics and then you have the gynecology. And with the gynecology especially, I like to think about it very anatomically. So I like to say, all right, let's start with vaginal pathologies, then go up to, you know, your cervical, uterine, ovarian, et cetera. And then you can build like vignettes on that anatomic framework.
That's awesome. Oh, man.
Shall we go? I snuck in a radiograph and maybe you can like describe the radiograph as we go through and then, yeah, we'll go through it.
Your thing. Oh, internal medicine. Here we go. So we have a 73 year old male smoker presenting with fatigue and arm pain. He has a history of back pain that has been refractory to acetaminophen. Vitals are stable. He has pallor and point tenderness in his left arm and ribs. His hematocrit is low. Serum calcium levels are elevated. Radiograph of the left arm is shown. And it is the left arm, it's got like, man, am I really going to use the buzzword? Moth eaten. Appearance to, to the bone, kind of looks like Swiss cheese of the radius and ulna there. And no, no obvious deformities or like displacement, no fractures, anything like that. Sorry. Little bit of the orthobro came out in me. So which of the following diagnostics would be the most useful next best step in management? So we got A, blood culture, B, bone marrow biopsy, C, bone scan, D, serum PTHRP.
Parathyroid related peptide.
Yeah. And it's funny, like my brain doesn't translate that. It's just like, it's, it's like, I know what it is and I, in my head it translated, but.
No, that, that's my bad because I was just too lazy to type, type the whole thing out. So my bad.
And then E, serum protein electrophoresis. So Rahul, what should we be thinking about here?
Awesome. I think you did a excellent categorization. And you know, one, one of the big picture points as this question has like an image is you really use like the vignette to help confirm what you were thinking and going for with the image. And I think that's like such an important point is that like shelf, step two, even step one questions, like they're not expecting you to be radiologist or pathologist. So if you can really like double down and be like, okay, I need to like figure out what's going on in the vignette and I'm going to confirm my suspicion with the pathology slide or with the radiograph. I think that that's going to be really helpful and important. One of the points that I just want to bring up is, you know, here you have a 73 year old male smoker and has fatigue and arm pain, right? And fatigue is something like constitutional. And then he has a history of back pain that's refractory to acetaminophen. Like when I hear of the word refractory, and sometimes what they'll say is the patient continues to have back pain despite acetaminophen. So this is like super important because like when you hear about refractory, clinically and from a exam standpoint, what that means is that maybe you just didn't give enough acetaminophen. Or maybe you have to bump up to the second line therapy, like morphine or something like that, right? Or maybe you're just like missing something, like this is not musculoskeletal back pain, because what, what is the diagnosis, Andy?
This is, I believe, MM?
Yeah, multiple myeloma. Yeah, for sure. Exactly. And like, you know, the hematocrit being low, I was kind of wanting to incorporate the Rulow formation. Because you know, the immunoglobulins that the plasma cell discretion multiple myeloma makes is going to just stick kind of like a sugar coated Twizzler, stick to the red blood cells and cause them to stack up like poker chips. You have the osteolytic lesions and the osteolytic lesions also contribute to the elevations in calcium. These patients can have renal dysfunction. These patients can also have really bad infections. Cause yeah, they're making a ish ton of immunoglobulins. But remember, these immunoglobulins are not like effective at all. And yeah, exactly. They're not working. So. All right, cool. How would you work up this patient? Next best step?
So I would go with the serum protein electrophoresis.
Yeah, absolutely. So serum protein electrophoresis, you'll see that M spike. And remember the M spike actually represents like IgG or IgA that's elevated. And sometimes like in my mind, when I was going through med school, I was like M spike, IgM. And it's like, nope, nope, nope. IgM, M spike, you're probably thinking about something like Waldenstrom's macroglobulinemia, which has hyperviscosity syndrome symptoms and IgM, whereas this one is an M protein, which means a monoclonal spike of IgG.
Yep. And I believe there's a nice little, I can't, crab, right?
Yeah.
For multiple myeloma, you got the hypercalcemia for a C, renal dysfunction for the R, anemia for the A. Oh gosh. What's the B?
I think back pain or bone issues.
Back or bone issues. Backslash bone pain. That's what it is. Yep. So if you look back in the questions, you now four for four. So.
Exactly, exactly. And, and you know, like one thing that I will say, just as a really nice illness script for IM shelf, if you see an elderly patient with back pain, the two differentials that I would encourage you to think about is prostate cancer that metastasized to the vertebrae or multiple myeloma. Like that ends up kind of at least being two of the most common illness scripts that they like to test.
Or osteoblastoma.
Yeah, could be osteoblastoma. So could, could even be, you know, Paget's disease of the bone. Who knows? Yeah.
Osteoblastoma is the classic, like back pain refractory to NSAIDs or acetaminophen that hurts at night. So extra learning for you. And again, for internal medicine, this was honestly the toughest one to study for. Shelf wise, just because there's so much and with, my rotation is only six weeks. It was not enough time to prepare, to be honest.
And it's the majority of step two CK as well. It's like 50 to 60% of step two CK, which is crazy.
Yeah. So I, I mean, a part of me wants to recommend doing internal medicine later in the year, just because like you pick up a bunch of other tools from your other rotations. I did it second and that was rough. And the thing that saved me was we do like shelf retakes where you can take it again to get a higher score. So like the first time didn't go well. And the second one managed to go pretty well because I took it at the end of my entire clerkship year. So I, I will say the biggest tip for studying internal medicine is give yourself some grace. There are going to be days where you were just too tired to do your questions and you're going to feel like the world is ending.
Yeah.
It's not. It's okay. If you need the rest day, please take it. Cause IM is a brutal rotation.
Yeah, for sure. No, I, I resonate with that. And like, balance is so key. Don't lose yourself during these tough rotations like IM where you're there probably until sign out sometimes. And that's where like questions per week again, is very helpful because maybe you have a Saturday off and you know, you need to get 120 of those questions in, in the week. Okay. I can maybe do a little bit more when I'm fresh at a coffee shop, which is my choice or the place that I like to study. But you know, you can do that, you can do more questions on the weekend then. And yeah, no, that's great. Very nice.
So moving right along to neurology. So we got a 52 year old woman presenting with sudden left sided weakness and speech difficulty noticed seven hours ago. Highlight seven hours ago. She has a history of smoking, hypertension, diabetes and fainting episodes. Family history of stroke in the first degree. Examination reveals left side of facial droop and reduced strength on the left side. Brain MRI indicates an ischemic stroke in the right MCA or middle cerebral artery distribution. Which of the following patient risk factors is the strongest modifiable risk factor given this presentation? Ooh, this is a high yield one. Okay. So A, smoking, B, diabetes, diabetes mellitus, C, hypertension, or D, family history. And this is one of those things that, oh, I'm not going to lie, I, I watched. Also shout out to Dr. High Yield, Dr. Steven Vu. He is also a fan of the channel. But I still remember watching his neurology review and was like, this is just one of those things where you just, just know it and reflexively know. And it is that, well, actually, do you want to explain it a little bit before I just regurgitate?
No, go for it. I, I like it. You're, you're on a track. So I don't want to.
So.
Take you away.
Stroke, no matter what, the biggest risk factor is hypertension for strokes. Like, and they'll try to trip you up with the history of smoking, diabetes and everything. But just stroke, biggest risk factor, hypertension.
Boom. Mic drop. All right. Awesome. No, I, I completely agree. And you know, I, I love Dr. High Yield's videos. They're, they're so great. So you know, this question is a very common question stem that you'll get, right? And it's like the risk factor question. And when I was going through this, I was like, all of these are bad. Like I don't want, I don't want to have my patients have any of these uncontrolled, like uncontrolled smoking. No. But you know, the USMLE and shelf really wants you to know, like, what is the strongest risk factor? Because if you think about it, to integrate step one, that strongest risk factor kind of dominoes the cascade of events to get you to that pathology, right? So it's like in the pathophysiological mechanism, the first step may be these risk factors. And so the takeaway in this question in my mind is basically like, if you have a patient who has focal neurological deficits, it is stroke until proven otherwise. And this is clinically as well. Like whenever I see a child who comes in with focal neurological deficits, I'm going to definitely rule out stroke before I say, oh yeah, it's just like migraine with stroke like features. It's like, no, I have to do my due diligence. And so you're absolutely correct when you're saying hypertension, modifiable risk factor for stroke. Remember family history. I wish you can modify your family, but it's a, age is one of the non-modifiable risk factors. So just something to keep in mind.
And also age will probably pop up as an answer choice too. Same thing, same thing. Smoking is here too. You're going to be like, oh yeah, you can quit smoking. Like that's going to be the biggest modifiable one. You know, it's super well correlated with hypercoagulability. Just block it all out and reflexively say hypertension. I will say, you said, it looks like brain, you include a brain MRI. Just a learning pearl for everybody. You will have a question where somebody's coming in for a stroke and it will be a next best step in management. Knee jerk, non-con head CT. Because you are trying to rule out hemorrhagic stroke versus ischemic. So that you are guaranteed to get a question on that, on your neuro, neuro shelf. And of course with, with this, my neurology rotation was only three weeks. So I'd really had to cram to get this thing done. I would say be pretty, I did, it was like inpatient in the morning, outpatient in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Really hammer home your, your distributions of like, kind of your, what is it called? Homunculus, homunculus. So localizing, say if this, like the MCA goes out, like what's going to be affected is super, super crucial. You get so many questions on that sort of localization. Rule of fours for brain stem localization. I, I literally just, like, I don't know any of those. I just like remember the rule of fours and I can figure it out. So those are my two biggest, biggest tips. Really hammer home stroke.
Yeah, for sure. I, I love, I love those pearls. And yeah, non-contrast head CT, especially to stratify hemorrhagic versus ischemic and your decision-making for TPA as well. If the patient has symptoms and they present within four and a half hours. So.
Oh man, you stole my thunder. I was going to say like, hey, does anybody know what the timeframe for TPA is? Leave in the comments, but you gave it away.
My bad.
It's okay. All right.
We'll get a question here. How about that?
We, we got our last question, surgery for the surgery shelf. Got a 40 year old female brought to the emergency department due to unilateral lower abdominal pain. There is a broad differential for that. The patient has a history of refractory inflammatory bowel disease, hypertension, glucocorticoid induced hyperglycemia. Abdominal examination is significant for centripetal obesity and abdominal stre- is it strie? Strie?
Strie, yes. Potato, potato.
The patient is found to have incarcerated hernia and is taken emergently for laparotomy. The surgical procedure is uncomplicated. However, in the post recovery room, she becomes acutely hypotensive and tachycardic despite normal saline IV fluid boluses. No bleeding is noted at the site and abdominal exam is unchanged. Which of the following is the best immediate step in management of this patient? A, CT scan of abdomen, B, epinephrine infusion, C, subcutaneous epinephrine, or D, hydrochlorazone? Oh, I love this question. I love this because you are guaranteed to get one of these on either surgery or even internal medicine.
Yeah, or even step one, honestly.
Yeah, that, that too. So this is something that I, I see in the PACU a lot. Well, not, not a lot, but it's one of those things that they always ask me about in recovery. So there, there's a couple of things here that are super significant. One, history. Two, vital. So you know, going back to our first question, vital signs stable is a big key. Here, vital signs are not stable. It's hypotensive with compensatory tachycardia. So this is where history is super important and also understanding the treatment for a lot of past medical history. So notice if you have refractory, refractory inflammatory bowel disease, hypertension and glucocorticoid induced hyperglycemia. And so for inflammatory bowel disease, you, a lot of the treatment consists of chronic steroid use. And not just that, but you, you kind of made it easy, but you, you have glucocorticoid induced hyperglycemia. You gotta have a lot glucocorticoids in your system chronically to have that going on. And then not just that, but now you throw in the obesity, abdominal strie in there too. So this person is used to being loaded with glucocorticoids. Now, what does that do to the endocrine system? Dr. Demania?
All right. So no, I, I love your thought process. And, and essentially what you're describing is that this patient is going to have Cushing syndrome secondary to chronic steroid use, right? And whenever you have chronic steroids, just to integrate some step one stuff, it is going to cause you to have suppression of the hypothalamic-pituitary axis, specifically the adrenal axis. So you're going to have low ACTH, you're going to have low endogenous. So you're going to have low ACTH, you're going to have low endogenous cortisol, um, et cetera. And so in these patients, what's super important for us to do is consider something like surgery a stressor. So if it's a stressor and they don't have the endogenous cortisol, Andy, what's going to be the most immediate next best step that you may even need to give prior to or intra OR?
Oh, you need to kind of supplement, uh, that steroid. So hydrochlorazone, because, um, like you said, ACTH and everything, it's all messed up and those are things that regulate blood pressure.
Yeah.
So, you know, with them not being able to respond appropriately on their own, they need some exogenous steroids. So, uh, yeah, I've, I've seen this, uh, given a lot in PACU. So hydrochlorazone, D.
Yeah, absolutely. Great, uh, great answer. It's the correct answer. Remember that, uh, just to, uh, highlight, uh, again, that whenever a patient is unstable, you don't want to put them in a scanner. Um, I always like to give a little bit of tough love, but I think it's super important. But I always tell my pediatric ICU fellows that unstable patients do not get transported out of the ICU. And why is that? Because you don't want to die in a CT scanner and you don't want to die in the hospital elevator going down to the CT scanner. And so it's really important to stay prepared for any emergencies, but if the patient is unstable in front of you, you have to, uh, resuscitate them and make sure that they are vitally stable before moving them anywhere. Epi infusion would be probably the correct answer if you're worried about some sort of cardiogenic shock and subQ Epi, uh, or IM Epi, for example, would be if, uh, the patient, um, you thought had anaphylaxis, which is, uh, not necessarily going to be the case here. So excellent job. And one other thing for surgery, uh, shelf and surgery questions that I would also emphasize is always think about post-operative complications. Uh, this is, uh, one of the complications where you could have an adrenal crisis, but there could be things like bleeding, infection, et cetera, on a certain timeline for your surgery questions.
Um, and especially for surgery, I, I noticed, again, you can, um, confirm or deny this. A lot of USMLE questions are testing the branch point between do nothing and do everything. So you'll get a ton of these questions, uh, in, with a patient presenting in the emergency department where you, you have to piece out, it's either stabilize in the ER, discharge like with outpatient follow-up, or, uh, get them back to the OR right now. And so, um, learning that branch point, I, I think is a skill, but something that will really, really help you on your surgery, um, shelf, uh, and honestly, on your surgery rotation, um, is, you know, you will be called down, um, for consults, uh, in the emergency department and you will be called to assess them and you need to make that determination of like, do I need to call my attending to get this rolled back like in the next hour? Or especially if you're on overnight call, like, do I need to wake my attending up for this? You know, like, is he going to be pissed off that he's coming in for a non-emergent case at 3:00 AM in the morning? Or is this, oh God, this has to go back now?
Absolutely.
So, uh, you know, both practically and, um, within your shelves. It's super useful to know that branch point.
For sure. And you know, I, I just, you bring a really nice, uh, distinction up. Uh, and sometimes what you'll hear on your, um, actual rotations is, oh, there's the board answer and then there's what we do clinically. And you know, for me, I actually refute that argument. And to be honest, I'll tell you why. And that is because board questions are going to test you very objectively in a very black and white scenario. Whereas like clinically, the truth is always in the middle and there are so many other complex patient system, uh, type of considerations, which you have to, uh, take into account. And so sometimes, uh, when you are, you know, maybe a little bit frustrated at some of the answers based on what you're seeing in, uh, clinical, uh, rotations, uh, just take a step back and just try to make sure, uh, that you center yourself around the fact that boards are testing you a very objective, uh, situation. And you want to go with more of that textbook answer. And that textbook answer also helps clinically as well.
Yeah. Um, and that's, that also is a learned skill too. Uh, I remember expressing my frustration a lot, even to you, uh, during, during my, uh, clerkships, just like, man, I, I wasn't doing well on practice tests and everything because I would see my attending do one thing and then that answer choice would of course be there. And, oh, it's, I pick it, I get it wrong. And I'm like, what do you mean? I saw this done. It's like, does this mean that I'm witnessing malpractice daily? It's like, no, there's a, there's an art to it. Um, but yeah, I, I think for me, I enjoy kind of the test-taking strategy and knowing that there, there is, uh, maybe, I don't know what a great word for it, but a game to, to the, uh, test. And that's how I've always approached standardized testing. And again, I, I really enjoy doing this stuff because it, it allows you, you guys that's watching and listening to see how like my brain works, your brain works as we're reading through these questions. Uh, and hopefully you can take some of those and, um, you know, put it in your own study, uh, and test taking toolbox. And, uh, Rahul, I, I would honestly love to, um, do events and live streams and even do more of, uh, these, uh, in the future. Again, if you're watching or listening, please let me know in the comments if you, uh, enjoy this kind of content. And I, as a fourth year, as I'm looking forward to graduating, I, I feel a little bit more confident, um, addressing these questions. You know, I, I have fairly complete, uh, clinical fun. Now, uh, I was a little nervous, uh, with the, the George coming out. It's like, oh man, this is pulling some deep genetics from the back of my head. Uh, but I managed to.
You did awesome.
Managed to do, do okay today.
Yeah. No, Andy, I, I completely agree. And, uh, thanks for having me, uh, on. And, uh, honestly, you're so talented. Great job with these questions and all the stuff you're doing too.
Thank you so much. And, um, i- if you guys are in the preparation stages for your shelves or, uh, USMLE, please go check out Higuru. He's going to have courses and, uh, I believe by the time, uh, this goes up, uh, or if not, uh, very shortly after, there will be a brand new beautiful step two course, uh, re- ready, um, to check out. Uh, and if anything, I swear up and down by the Notion template.
Thank you.
If you, if you guys don't pick up anything else from, um, Higuru's plethora of resources, Notion template. I'm telling you, it organized my life and it ran my life for, for three months.
Oh my gosh.
I, I don't think I would have survived without it. Um, it helped me to schedule what I need to get done every single day. Um, it took a lot of backbone work out of like listing what, um, videos of sketchy chapters of first aid, um, chapters of pathoma that I need to get through, uh, each day. And like, uh, just, it, it's so much backend work that is saved. Um, and I cannot recommend it enough. Um, and if you guys are in the market for a pass fail course, because you know, everybody's trying to blitz through and just get step one out of the way at this point, uh, I would also highly recommend, um, his course too. I, I used it to knock out step one in like three and a half weeks or something like that.
Yeah. No, thanks so much. I, I really liked taking a lot of this, uh, information for step one especially. And, uh, you know, step two, as I work on that content and, and really just, uh, integrate and collate it and make it, you know, high energy and fun. Um, I think we, as, uh, developing medical students and physicians, we are all in this whole business of lifelong learning. And if I can make these high stakes exams just a little less stressful, I think that that's my overall mission when it comes to, uh, uh, doing all this USMLE stuff and being a uber nerd.
And you, I mean, you do a great job at mentoring students. Again, cannot thank you enough, uh, for your help over third year. Rahul, thank you so much for your time and your knowledge, expertise. Again, everybody, uh, check out his stuff. Let me know down in the comments if you would like to see more of, you know, this kind of content. And I would love to, uh, do some sort of live stream event, um, where we can do this again in, in a more, uh, I guess long form, longer form, uh, content and even have the ability to be interactive, uh, with you guys. So.
For sure. Always fun hanging out.
Absolutely. Thanks for watching. Thanks for listening and we will see you in the next one. Bye.